Welcome to The Immigrant's Path showcasing the successes, challenges, and the many paths to America. Brought to you by Saraf Gentili LLP, a New York-based law firm representing individuals nationwide on immigration and other complex litigation matters.
Hi, this is Joe Gentili, the host of The Immigrant's Path. Today's guest is Obala Obala. We're gonna walk through his journey from escaping a genocide in Ethiopia to living in a refugee camp in Kenya to eventually coming to the US as a refugee and becoming an elected official in Minnesota. His story is truly amazing. It really shows the power of belief and optimism and that magical things can happen in this country. And it's also so inspirational just to see somebody who's been through so much and comes here with such a desire to give back to the country and to give back to the people in his community. So I hope you all enjoy this episode. He's really an amazing guy, not much more. The interview will speak for itself. Thanks. Okay, hi everybody. So I am Joe Gentili, partnered Saraf Gentili LLP, and I'm here today with Obala Obala. Welcome. Thank you so much for coming on. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe.
So I asked you to come on. I contacted you because I read about you in an article, initially a small piece in the Los Angeles Times, and then I kind of looked you up from there and I looked at some more articles about you. I saw some of your talking and I got a better sense of the scope of your life and what you've accomplished so far at such a young age. And it's just, it's amazing to me. So I wanted to help share this with other people who are either newly immigrated to the US or are thinking of coming here. So if you can, I'd like to just describe a bit about, have you describe a bit about your early life in Gombela, Gombela Ethiopia? So if you could just take us through kind of that early part of your life, that'd be great.
Sure. Well, again, thank you again, Joe, for this opportunity. My name is Obala Obala and I was born in Gombela in Ethiopia and grew up in refugee camp in Kenya. A little bit about my life in Gombela. We live in, across the river. So we're in the border of South Sudan in Ethiopia. So, and then life there was great at young age. So I still remember how we used to go fishing and, you know, with my friends, how we go hunting. So, and because we are farmers and we keep like domestic animal, like cattle, goats and other stuff. And, but life changes after a genocide that happened in my hometown. And then from there, we had to flee our hometown, Gombela Ethiopia, and we have to, we decided to run and seek a refuge. And that's how everything, but before genocide, life was good. And we, we are blessed with a very fertile land. We, anything can grow in our land. You know, I will say most of 50% on Gombela. So in that region, so we can fit the whole country of Ethiopia. It's just the problem is that there's not a lot of development in the area. So foreign country come, they will do agriculture that doesn't benefit the local community. So, and then this is like something been happening for years, decades, so many years. And the reason being is because education was not part of that side of the country, you know, we have not been given opportunity.
How old were you when you were forced to leave?
I was eight, going to nine.
Wow. And from what I remember reading previously, at that age with your family, you had to walk for three days to the Sudanese border?
Yes. It actually took us like, kind of like a week because we were walking like barefooted. There's no shoes, nothing at all. We had to walk from Ethiopia to South Sudan border, which is a place called Pachala. So, and we stayed there for a couple of few weeks and then after that, we get some help and then we get rescued and then we have, we get flew to Kenya. And that's where we reached through refugee camp in Dada.
And you stayed at that refugee camp for 10 years, I guess, from the ages of eight to about 18?
Yeah. So from the age, in the refugee camp, we, we stay, first we stay in Nairobi for a few years. And then from there, from 2005 and 2005, we, that's when we reaching the refugee camp. Because of the process, we have to stay in Nairobi town, you know, somewhere there before. And 2005, that's where we reach in the refugee camp in Dada. And then we stayed there from 2005 until 2013. That's where we left the refugee camp.
And so while, while you're in a refugee camp, are you, I mean, these are like prime schooling years. I mean, are you able to attend school while you're there? I mean, what, what's the environment like? Is it safe? If you could just give us just a view into what life is like at a refugee camp in Kenya?
Life in refugee camp, I would say a little safe compared to all the trauma that we went through. From running from my country, seeing people being laid on the road, being slaughtered in front of us, including some of my relatives. In the refugee camp, we are kind of like, when it come to security, the security is safe because UNSR kind of put us in a big compound whereby all refugees stay there. So, but the only problem that we face in the refugee camp was starvation, like hunger. There's not enough food. And the weather is hot. Every day is like around 110 degree hot and it is humid. So, and for us, there's nothing, you know, you, you're walking on barefoot on, you know, on a sun that is really hot, like something close to, you know, is, I haven't, I can't explain to here. So life, that's how it is, the schooling. In my camp, there were not any school in my area before. So we have to walk like something like one hour from my, from my local community to the nearest school compound because by then they have not built any school yet. So that was the struggle. And the biggest, the biggest thing that is still, I kind of forget about it is, you know, sometimes you have to go like two days without eating, sometime the water, there's not a lot of water because, you know, water come and go, you know. And someday you can go like two days, three days without eating or without even taking shower. But the hope is there that you can miss those two days, but the next two days you will eat. So, and that's what my mom will tell me. So we, we got this. So let us stay like this because there's nothing. She will try anything to make it to become a food, but sometime will be impossible.
I mean, I could, I could easily see a situation where if somebody has to go through that and endure that for a period of 10 years, that could start to like break somebody down. I mean, I could break somebody down, especially as a parent. Yeah, I can't even imagine, I have two kids. I can't imagine going through that with my children. You know, the lack of food and water, I mean, just the absolute basics. So what? And, you know, you, I guess to some degree, asking you speak for your parents too or your mom. What sustained you and her throughout all this? How did you have the ability to get through this and not break?
Well, the biggest thing that I learned from my mom, especially at that young age, my mom gave me two choices. That, "Obala, you stay here and, and still be alive for as long as God wishes." Or you go back to Gombela and whereby they can kill you anytime they spot you in the area. So that was the biggest fear that my mom told me. My mom will tell me like, the more we stay in the refugee camp, something somewhere, the European country like America, Australia, or, you know, Canada, you know, and, you know, UK, one day they will give us a resettlement that can get us over there abroad. And she's like, "If you go to America, you will get anything you want. You'll become, if you want to become a lawyer, if you want to become a doctor, a nurse, a social worker, anything." That's, that's a country that, you know, if we stay here, you will go to America one day. I'm like, "Mom, you have not been to America. And why you so like, you know, you're so passionate about it and every day you bring it up?" She's like, "Well, I am not educated, but I hear things from people, you know, those talk around me." And that hope itself, when my mom always talk about it, that kept me, you know, she's my mom. I look at everything after her and she's, she's like, "I've gotten me." I'm like, "If she say there's something good in the future, I think I will just have to be patient and have to worry about food or anything."
That's beautiful. So how did the opportunity to come to the US arrive? Like what, what happened that allowed you to come here?
In 2008, there were like UNSR, they do something like, I don't know, is, I will just say like a lottery or something. You know, they pick any name because there's a lot of thousand, more than 10,000 refugee, you know. So the UNSR will just pick from any number, would be like from one to 20. And then will be like those 10 family, their name will be fixed and then they're like, will be picked and then there will be interview. And then if they pass through the interview, they will have the opportunity to go to America. So that's how the process was. So for, for some reason from nowhere, our name was picked out of, you know, all of those 50,000 refugee in the camp. And one day we were just on the boat and then, you know, the leader from the community just came to us and like, "Your family name as being, you know, posted on the board for the interview." And then my mom was like, "What interview?" And then the community leader was like, "The interview that everyone been waiting for." So that's a sign that you guys may go to America.
What, what went through your head when you got picked? I mean, that must have been amazing.
Yeah. Well, it was like a big celebration because being in a refugee, like no one, like no one can advocate for you. No one will mention your name to UNSR or the, you know, Department of Homeland Security that those people can go to America, you know. It's just something will tell those offices that, you know, those official people that, "Let's pick those family." And then your name will be posted. So we celebrated for almost three days. And by then, like my mom was like, "This is the thing I've been telling you." So, and then the hope increasing, you know, from there. So we celebrate. And then after one week, we went for the interview, our first interview. So, and then we did the interview and what they told us, well, like we will verify everything. All you said here, if this true, and then we will get back to you. So, and then three month went by after the interview, six month went by, one year went by, two years went by, three years went by. After three years, they posted our name again and said, "Now your case is, is being sent to like, some, another government official, it's called JBA, that they have to verify. They have to go to your country and see if everything you told us, if there is a genocide in Gombela." You know, those are the people from the United States, you know, Homeland Security, they will be sent there in your, because everything have to match with this story, you know. So they went by and then they did their own investigation out there if there is really a genocide happening in this place. And then after that, after one year later, we just make it to four years, seen our name as being posted for our first interview. They came back and they're like, "Well, you guys has been approved, but now just keep looking on the board. Your name will be posted anytime." So that's how it is. And then it took us another, you know, three years, you know, from 2008 until 2013, they're like, "You are finally being approved by Department of Homeland Security and you're going to America." So, and now you guys are flying out to United States.
I'm guessing you didn't believe it until the plane actually took off.
So I didn't believe it because until I was in New York, you know, there, you know, the international airport in New York. So I didn't believe it. So, because we went through their airplane, we passed through UK, you know. And then after that, I'm like, "This is UK." Something will tell me, someone from refugee will be like, "Those are wrong family, bring them back." You know, and then we don't put a lot of hope right, you know, until you are in USA. But finally, when we landed in New York and then one of my friend next to me was like, "We are in United States of America." I'm like, "Is it true?" And then he's like, "Look at that post outside the United States of America." And then I shed tears and we get out of the airplane. And after that, we switched the airplane from New York to Washington DC where we settled in Baltimore, in Maryland.
So how were, I mean, you must have had a lot of expectations built up over the period of time that you were waiting to come here. So I guess at least when you first got here, how did the expectations match with reality?
The expectation did not match with reality. The first three months that we landed in Silver Spring. Because when I, when we, when we, in the process of coming here, you know, people will tell us when you go to America, if you don't have high school diploma, you will go and get your high school diploma first and then go to college. So, and that was the only thing that I'm like, I don't care about any money. I don't care about any job. I want to get high school diploma because I didn't graduate in Kenya. So I need a high school diploma so that I can go to college because in my family, no one has went to college. No one has high school diploma. So, and the first week when we were in Silver Spring, I talked to my shore for worker and I asked her, "Well, we are here one week already. Is there, can we start the process of going to high school?" And then what she told me was that, "You and your brother cannot go to high school, but your sister, because she is 16, she can go to high school." And then I look at her and I'm like, "Why?" They tell us, "America, you can get, you can go to school anytime." She's like, "No, unless you were under, you know, 19 in the law in Maryland, you have to be under 19 to go to high school, but you, you are going to turn 20, you know, in few days." Because we, it was December 3rd and then in January 3rd, because my ID say January 1st, I was 20. So she's like, "You will be 20, so you cannot, you know, you cannot go to high school." And then that was brought me into pieces and I cry inside. And she sent us home. She's like, "Just forget about going to high school. So right now, your next process is to look for a job so that you can support yourself and your family." That was like the worst news ever. And I didn't eat for almost two days. So, and my mom will just come to me in the room. She's like, "Well, there's some, there's another option. There's another way. This cannot be the only answer to that question that you, that's to your dream." So, and I keep praying. And then our third week, I went back to her office. I'm like, "Hey, did you find something else?" She's like, "I have the application. There's a job in Baltimore whereby it pays $7 per hour. It's a factory whereby you pick onions and then, you know, you put the clean one, the other side, and then you put the other one." I'm like, "I didn't come to America to collect onion or some, you know." And she's like, "Well, this is the only option I have for you, Obala. There's no way I can send you to high school or any other program." I'm like, "Are there no any other program?" She's like, "Nope." So from there, I just left her office and then I came home. On my way home, I met one of the guy, you know, we're in Metro Bass and then he was sitting to me, he's from Ethiopia. And I just knew by the look, I'm like, I asked him, "Are you Ethiopian?" And they said like, "Yeah, I'm Ethiopian. How do you know?" I'm like, "Well, I'm from Ethiopia too." So, and then I'm like, "You're carrying a backpack behind you. Where are you, where are you from?" He's like, "Hey, I just get back from school." And, you know, as an immigrant, immigrant asks a lot of question, you know. And I just throw him a lot of question. I'm like, "You go to school? How old are you?" Because we are kind of the same height, you know. And he's like, "Well, I'm 21 and there's a program called Job Corps that I just attending to get my high school diploma and then I can get a trade, which is like, I can get my anything. You can be a welder, you can be a CNA, you can be a trained medical assistant, you can be anything, you can be LPN." I'm like, "Really? How much would you have to pay?" She, and he's like, "Zero, nothing." And then I'm like, "Please tell me." And then he wrote down the name and then the website. So I told the boss, the metro person like, "Hey, can you make a, like, can I go back?" He's like, "No," you know, because I thought they can just go back, you know. And then he's like, "No, you have to stop in your, you know, destination and then take another bus that go back to Silver Spring." And then, and then after that, I look at the time and then it's already like past, you know, office hours. In the morning, I went to my social worker office and then I have there, you know, all my paperwork that this guy give it to me to show it to her. And what I told her, "Hey, good news. I met someone in the bus yesterday. This, this program called Job Corps, I can go and I can get my high school diploma." My social worker look at me and she like, "Obala, you cannot go to Job Corps." I know about Job Corps. If you go to Job Corps, who will support your mom? Your mom doesn't speak English and your mom has some medical condition that she need help.
Can I, can I send this video to your social worker, your ex-social worker when we're done?
I, I've been looking for her, so, but I...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but...
Yeah, yeah. So, and she, she's like, "You cannot go to Job Corps." I'm like, "You knew about Job Corps?" She's like, "Yeah." And she's like, "Job Corps is a program where you stay in there for a year. You cannot come back home. A year or two years and then get your thing done. From the level that you are in with your English and everything, you cannot get done within that period of time. And who will help your mom?" So I was shaking. I left the office. I told that lady, "From today, this is the last visit for me to come to your office." And I, you are not my social worker, you're not my caseworker. Moving forward, I will not ask you any question." I left the office and then I came back home crying in the bath, you know, and everyone was looking at me, you know. A 20-year-old, you know, you know, an African kid, 20-year-old, you know, you know, my eyes was red, you know. And then my mom, when I reached home, my mom was like, "Did you fight with anyone?" I'm like, "No." This lady been shutting down all my dreams. So, and then I called my uncle who is in Sioux Falls. And then he's like, "Hey, Obala, welcome to America." And then I'm like, "Yeah." And then before you even say anything, I'm like, "Uncle, do you know anything about Job Corps?" Because he live all the way in Midwest here. He's like, "Yeah, I know about Job Corps. I didn't know you, you, you know about Job Corps." I'm like, "I just heard about it two days ago." And my social worker doesn't want me to go. So my, my uncle who's in Sioux Falls told me, "I graduated from Job Corps in Utah in 1996." And I'm like, "What? You know about Job Corps?"
It's been around a long time.
I'm like, "Wow." So it's like, "If you want to go to Job Corps, I can move you guys here and then you can go to Job Corps." I'm like, "Done. There's no more conversation. We are done. We are moving there." And then I didn't even ask, "Where is Sodakota? Where is, what, where is what?" I'm like, "We are moving there." So, story short, I went to my social worker. I told her, "Hey, next month, we are leaving. We are leaving next month. You know, it's in February, we are leaving. We are going to Sodakota." She's like, "What are you talking about?" And I'm like, "Well, I'm going to Job Corps. My uncle who's in Sioux Falls will help me go to Job Corps." And she's like, "What about your mom?" I'm like, "I'm moving with my mom." And then the second question she asked me, "What about your apartment? You have signed the lease." I'm like, "I didn't sign anything. I know how to read. I didn't sign any lease of that apartment." Or, and she was like, "You must be crazy. In America, if you leave without fulfilling your full 12-month, you will get like, you will not get any, another opportunity of renting." I'm like, "I don't care. As long as I go to school, I don't care." So, and then from there, I left our office. My uncle did everything. And then we moved from Silver Spring, February 14, to Sioux Falls. And my mom moved to Minnesota. I went to Sioux Falls. And then I attend Job Corps from March until December. That process, I get my high school diploma, I get my trained medical assistant, I get my CNA, and I graduate with GPA of 3.6.
What's a CNA?
Certified Nursing Assistant.
Okay.
So, and that is how everything started. So, and since then, I have not spoke with my social worker. And then after I graduated from Sioux Falls and then I moved to Austin, Minnesota to support my mom. I start college here at Reverend and I graduated from Reverend with my associate degree. And then now I'm holding a bachelor degree in social work. So I was gonna do nursing and all this stuff. And then something, one day after I sat down, accomplished most of this stuff, something come to my head, you know, and what can I do so that I can piss off my social worker? And because I feel like I can't do anything, you know, I can't do anything. I gained my trained medical, I worked for Mayo Clinic, one of the best hospital in America for five years. And I'm like, "I can get a bachelor degree in social work." And one day, when I meet my social worker, I can tell her that, "This is the job you were breaking about that you tell me I can't do it." And now I have a bachelor degree social worker. So, that was came to my mind. So...
That's such a, such a great attitude that you're able to take something that's really a negative, that some people would be very bitter over and angry, but you're able to channel that into something positive, which, which is really impressive.
Thank you.
So, I mean, at this point in story, you've, you've learned English pretty well, I'm guessing up until this point. If you finish college, you get your high school degree, you get your associates, you get your bachelors. When do you start looking towards politics?
Well, I, I did not start, I did not like, I didn't have like a vision of becoming a politician or any leader of kind. But throughout my college, a lot of thing opened my eye, you know. And one thing that I strongly passionate about it was, you know, eliminating food insecurity on a college level. So when I was at Reverend, I saw something that I struggled with from all my childhood life in a refugee camp. And when I was on Reverend, I saw a student who missed classes because they don't have anything to eat. Student, you know, will rather pay for their textbook and miss buying lunch for themselves or filling their fridge with grocery stuff. So, and I see students struggle with that. And me too, I went through it because in Minnesota, college is too expensive. You know, we're the fifth highest in tuition fee paying for college, you know, in, in the nation. So, and I started advocating on my campus, you know, I asked student, "Hey, what's going on?" And they're like, "Well, we, we don't have anything to eat. So if we just hang out here." So, and then through that, I started advocating, you know, I start advocating on, you know, what can I do to eliminate this, you know. And from there, the small work that I started, talking to individual on campus, you know, it expanded. And I, you know, opened the first food pantry on, on my campus at Reverend whereby, you know, that food pantry right now is still strong and every student benefiting from it. In our first month, when we opened the food pantry, more than 400 student, you know, use that food pantry. And the line always...
I think most Americans would be surprised by that, that there's food insecurity at colleges. I mean, I've, I've heard of this before. I know it's real, but I would bet you the majority of the American public doesn't even know it exists.
Absolutely. And the reason is not existing is because, you know, we have this made whereby, you know, college student, you know, live on noodle, you know, ramen stuff, you know. And, and you are 20-something, why can you afford to, you know, have a job, you know? And for me, I work full-time job, you know, and I have, I'm going to school full-time too. But food insecurity still hit me really bad. And it happened to me, you know, this, this one day that I, I save all my money to pay for my tuition and my textbook. And then immediately, I had like saved 1,000, you know, and $80 in my savings, you know, the last, the, the end of the summer. And then school started and then I went to the bookstore, all in hundred, you know, hundred, hundred. So, and I was in the line. I'm like, "Today, this semester, I'm not gonna worry about taking any loan. I want to pay off everything and then just focusing on my grade, you know." So I have my money in my hand. And then one of the student asked me from behind and then he's like, "Obala, you're rich today." I'm like, "Yeah, it look like, but in two minutes or in, in one minute, I will be the poorest kid on this campus." He's like, "How? What do you mean?" He's like, how? What do you mean? It's like, I'm just, I'm like, just wait for it. So he watched me, I went to the cashier and then um, the cashier was like, your balance. Uh, is one thousand and something, the, oh, you how, you, do you mind, you wanna paid it off? Or I'm like, I wanna pay everything off. I ended over one thousand and eighty dollar. The only thing that came back is was one dollar and fifty cent. One dollar and fifty cent, so, and from there, I'm like, yep, one dollar and fifty cent, I have to go to cafeteria. So I went to the cafeteria and uh when I reach in cafeteria, I look up the menu, everything is two dollar fifty. Two dollar fifty, two dollar fifty, two dollars, and I have a dollar and fifty cent. So, five minute ago, I have a thousand that I can buy anything, I can go to the most expensive restaurant in town and then, but now I can't afford uh anything. So, I tried to, you know, uh, but gain or, you know, uh, you know, try to make the lady. Who in the cafeteria to bring their price down. I asked her, how much is that burger and french fry? And then she's like, well, you can see it is two dollar and fifty cent. I'm like, uh, is there something for a dollar fifty? She's like, no, our, all menu is at two dollar and fifty cent. I cry inside and um, I felt really bad and from there, one of my friend uh behind me is like, hey, do you wanna has to. Uh, you know, pull together our money, you know, so that we can buy uh those french fry and those chicken nugget. So I'm like, sure, you know, we grab those uh chicken nugget and french fry. We went, we sit down at the corner and then we giggle to ourselves and then he's like, it's really tastes good. I'm like. Any food tastes good. And he asked me, he's like, Obala, you're the president of the student uh senate, what are you doing? And this is where the process of me starting advocating for food insecurity started. So, and I'm like, well, I don't know, what do you have in your mind? And he's like, well, if there is a food pantry, uh, that will be great, you know, student can go and then, you know. And I'm like, someone talk to me about it, but I don't know how to start it, so, and he's like, well, it's all you, I'm like. I told him, give me a week, let me think about it and I will come back with uh any uh research that I've done. So it took me a, a week and then after two weeks, I come back with a student, we talked about it, we lay the plan out, I'm like. I will go out to the community and start, um, you know, requesting for money, doing fundraising. So, and from that point, I, I serve on Human Right Commission and then. And then from there, they give me the first donation of one thousand to start a food pantry. So, from there, that's all, all my activity went through and. Through that food pantry, right now is a state, uh, is a state law in Minnesota. Uh, that food pantry, I expanded, I run for um Leader Men, which is College Student. Um, Association, which is like over T, more than one hundred and eighty thousand student. I become the vice president and my main mission is to make sure every campus uh in Minnesota has a food pantry. So, and then I serve for one year and then the next year, uh, the second year I serve as a president, they elect me as a president. And then that food pantry that I started at Riveland. We turn it and become Hunger Free Campus Act, which is it passed uh with. Hundred percent support from both side of the aisle and now it is a law in Minnesota. Every two-year community college should have a food pantry. And uh seen this work, uh, seen uh last March, we have more than twenty campuses that as being recognized as. Uh, um, hunger free, you know, they, they don't struggle anymore.
So, the, I guess the ability to step up and lead. That, that you show in this story, is this, is this confidence something that you always had? Or is this something that you kinda had a struggle with when you were deciding whether or not to take on a leadership role in this?
I, 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 for me, I, I see myself, when you see a, uh, like, a struggle. If you see, like, if you're faced with difficulty, what can you do to turn it into opportunity? Because my mom doesn't like me complaining around in the house, you know, when, when refugee come, you know. Um, sometime I will come home, I will be like, mom, there's no water in the house, there's nothing, there's no food. And then she's like, well, we don't have any water right now in our community here, we don't have, but. There's another refugee camp, there's another, like, another community outside is like one hour and thirty minutes from here. You know, can you walk there and pitch water from there or buy water from there? And uh, and then I will look at her, I'm like, why are you answering a question with a question? She's like, well, instead of you complaining, uh, you are very strong young man, you can walk there. Get the water, drink, bring some, bring it home. And then I learned from her is that instead of sitting next to her and complain. Just what can you do to turn that opportunity, uh, that is struggle or to into opportunity? And then from there, I would just grab one, uh, you know, uh, jet can or I don't know how you call it like, um, you know. And then I would just start walking, I would just go there and then from there, two hours later or three hours later. I would be back home with water and then she's like, tomorrow in the morning, you will not complain, there's water. And then when I wake up in the morning, there's water and she can cook, she can drink. And throughout my life, moving to America, I'm like, America is a land of opportunity, but opportunities don't just come like that. You know, because, you know, I read a lot of books, you know, when you go to America, uh, you can be anything. But one person told me that those American dream is not something is hanging on the tree. You know, you cannot go to America and see someone be like, hey, come, I have this uh one million here, I wanna give it to you so that you can be anything. So it is the founding father, those who struggle here, they're like, we face so many struggle, we face everything here, but. Those opportunities, those immigrant who move here a long time ago, it's starting from, you know, World War One, World War Two. Those Vietnam will move here, you know, and uh they started from zero. And when I moved here, I had only like one shirt and one pants. I'm like, what can I do to, my story, the struggle that I had in the refugee camp to turn it into something. And uh, every day I see people walking either on the street or, you know, more doing something for volunteer, I go there. Because I'm like, my effort will help those people finish that work easily. So instead of just watch them, no, I have just to step in. And this is something I really use in my uh, in my childhood life, growing up, even moving here. And the biggest thing, I'm not a bright student, you know, I used to struggle. If I could be someone, you know, I don't share this with a lot of people, if I could be a kid that grew up in America. Uh, I, you know, some doctors could have diagnosed me with uh learning disability, you know. But I am someone who believe in my mom words that if you don't get anything, if you don't understand it. You have to take time, repeat it tomorrow, the more you repeat it, the more you repeat, it will get into your head. You know, my mom never went to school, but she has all those history of our homeland, our background and everything. You know, in her brain, she can sit down and year by year, and I'm like, how do you match those years and make it into reality? She's like, well, this is how I, we have been taught and this is how I remember thing. So, and that's how I live my life, you know. When I see something, I don't understand it, I ask question, I keep asking until I found the answer.
Your mother has a lot of wisdom.
Yeah, she, she, she does.
And this, this advice that she's giving you and what it's enabling is incredible because. What you and your mom have accomplished here in, you know, relatively short amount of time. It takes most families generations to get to, to, to have the first person graduate college, the first person elected. An elected official in the state where they live in, I mean, this is, it's, I mean, it's incredible this speed at which all this is happening. So, you know, I, I, I hear you crediting it to your, to your mother a lot and she must be just a very wise person. I could see she's had a great influence on your life. Um, you've also mentioned that you read some books that were influential. Do any books in particular stand out as being particularly influential for you?
Well, I, I read um, uh, one, one, one book that really been uh. Uh, a very uh info, when I moved here with uh one book uh by um, neurologist. He, um, uh, Ben Carson, so Ben Carson has this book called Think Big, you know. And uh, in his, in his book, he talked about how his childhood life, you know. They didn't have anything, but he, he kinda used to be like a smart kid. But uh, being a smart in whereby, you know, uh, he, they, they struggled that they went through like as African-American, you know. They don't have a lot of opportunities, you know, he, so I read most of the book. And I read some of the book, you know, some collection of the book that I don't even uh, uh, remember their title. So, and the biggest thing that I, I took away from Think Big, um, from uh Ben Carson. Was that, you know, when you sit down and think about how all those great. People accomplish everything, you know. Those, any decision that everyone, uh, or every accomplishment, either small or big, you know, it start with one decision. A decision that you yourself have to be like, I wanna sit next to this computer. And uh, from this podcast, what will I learn at the end of, of itself? So, and uh, anything, you can sit on the front of a screen TV, you know, watching a movie. You know, when you watch a movie, do you just watch a movie for entertainment or you watch a movie to, uh, to take that thing? Into something else or learn something from that movie. And uh, and one of the movies too that really inspire me, uh, is called Twenty Four, uh, Twenty Four Seasons is by Jeff. Hour, you know, when I, when we were in refugee, because it tell us about American, you know, how American deal with terrorists. Or what, whatever, or the intelligence, the FBI, how they work, you know. So I kinda learn from all those little thing and I'm like, you know, anything I see. I have to get something from it, you know. You know, I can, and I can, I can sit in a meeting that I don't even say anything because, and I just watch people, how they talk and how they, you know. And how they respond to other people and I'm just walk away from that meeting and be like, wow, I learned something today. You know, I can just sit in a debate whereby people just talk and, and from there. And since I moved to Austin, in uh, the first thing, if I can go back to my history. It was that after I registered in Riveland, three months into that, I, I didn't just. Um, become popular in, in town or that kid. Uh, my story started because I didn't have any car. So basically what I did was that I went to Mayo Office, you know, I walked to Mayo Office. Because after three months, I asked some of my relatives, those who've been in Austin for, you know, five years, six years, ten years. I asked them, who are our leaders here? Do you guys know anything about them? And then those refugee, those, some of them are my uncles, my relatives, they're like, when you said our leaders, what are you talking about? Be specific, the president or I'm like, forget about the president or about the senator. This city council, this mayors, this uh police, uh, uh, police, the chief of police. When I mentioned the police, they're like, okay, stop it there. Are you looking for trouble or anything? Kid, you're still new in America. You know, you know, in, 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 in black community, you don't talk about police, you know, unless you're in trouble, you know. So, so I'm like, wh- what do you mean? I'm looking for trouble, just because I mentioned the police, they're like, yeah, what do, what do you wanna do with the police? I'm like, well, I wanna know who are our police, I wanna know who is our chief of police, who is the mayor, and then my uncle walk away from the room. And then I asked my other cousin, they're like, dude, you, you don't know what you're talking about, just stay low, you know, stay low in this community. So they shut me down, I'm like, okay, if that is um, how staying low will make you uh a better resident, that's not me. So a week later, I Google the city hall and uh I walk into Mayo Office. Uh, from my apartment where we live was kinda, I think, uh, forty-five to one hour. So I walk there and uh I talked, I met with the lady, uh, the, the city clerk. And I'm like, hey, I'm here to see the mayor. And the first question she asked me was that, do you have an appointment? I'm like, oh, I'm, I'm, am I supposed to make appointment? Because, you know, growing up in a refugee, you, we don't know, you have to make appointment, you, if you wanna go to the unit here. You just go and wait two hours, three hours and then if you get the opportunity, you go in. So I still have that mentality and she's like, yeah, to meet the mayor, you make the appointment and then you come back. And I asked her, how long will appointment take? She's like, depend on the schedule, you know, one week, two weeks. I'm like, oh my god, that's long. And she look at the schedule, I'm like, take, just book me in the soonest one. She's like, next week. So a week later, I, I went back to the mayor and I was one hour early. You know, in uh, the appointment is supposed to be at two o'clock and I was there like one P M. She's like, Obala, you, you are here, do you have another appointment? I'm like, no, my appointment at two. And she's like, you're too early. I'm like, well, I don't wanna be late, you know, so she was laughing and I met the mayor at two. And the mayor was like, tell me about yourself. And I told the mayor, my name is Obala Obala. I moved to America a year ago and now I'm in Austin, I'm attending Riveland Community College. So I'm just here to ask you if there is anything I can do, especially to volunteer, to be part of the community, you know. Um, I, I can't help in any ways. The mayor look at me and uh, he thought someone sent me from the community or something to inspire, if he's like, did someone send you to inspire me? I'm like, no, um, I'm just a regular kid, I just moved to town, I just wanna be part of this because people really welcome me. Uh, at, at the college, everyone is welcoming and I'm like, what can I do to give back to the community? So, the mayor was like, Obala, this is the first time I have seen an immigrant or a refugee come to my office. In my ten years of service, to come to my office and ask uh what they can do, what motivate you? And then I'm like, well, I read a lot of speech from, you know, a lot of books. Uh, I know one thing that stood out from uh, uh, J K F. He said, you know, do not ask what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country. You know, America, I'm so grateful that I'm in Austin and I'm so grateful I'm in America. From refugee to here, you know, they sponsor our plane and I'm here now, I have a house. And I'm going to school and I just wanna give back, what can I do to give back to the community? The mayor shed a lot of tears and then he's like, kid, you will be something else in this community moving forward. So, six months into that, he appointed me uh as a Human Right Commission. And then from there, I start getting involved in the community and then anything I see, you know, I start connecting immigrant, you know. Telling their story, you know, why we are here, what brought us here, how their life. And then that relationship I built as, you know, send a lot of positive uh message throughout the community. Because someone need to step up because, and I see myself as, you know, I have to do it for the next generation. Because immigrant, when they move to America, they feel isolated, you know, they feel they isolate themselves, you know. They be like, oh, that's for American thing, you know, don't go to that community, you know. And I'm like, no, we don't wanna leave, if we wanna be successful. We need those native community to advise us, to give us, to mentor us and we can be involved. And our kid can be involved and that is how we become successful.
You know, I've, I've, I've spent uh a chunk of the last two days thinking about you. And thinking about why your story has resonated so much with so many people. Because, yes, you know, you, you had that election and you were many firsts uh in that election. But, but in America, there's, there's, there's a lot of firsts and not all of them get the amount of attention you have. But when I think about your story, like what stands out to me, that's unique in a lot of ways. Is you have this tremendous sense of optimism, it seems. You, you, you have a real belief. Um, not only in yourself, but of, in the people around you, they'll continue to do better and you have this. This desire to serve your community and this willingness to serve your community, however you wanna define community. Whether it be the, the refugee community or the, the, the broader community in, in your city or state. That's, it's, it's, it's not that common, you don't always see that, like a lot of the immigrant stories. That, that we've grown up on in America is, you know, there's, there's always the story of the immigrant who's, who's come here with nothing. And they've built themselves up to be important people, wealthy people in some cases. And, you know, that, that is impressive, it's a really big part of the American story. But probably what's been less celebrated has been the people that have come here. And immediately they're looking to contribute to everybody else around them and I, I, I think you really embody that. And a lot of people are, 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 are drawn to that story, um, so I mean, that's my take and that's. That's, that's what I find so impressive about you in so many ways. Um, so, and I, that story just, just really encapsulates that really well. So, thank, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Of all these things that you've accomplished, I mean, you, 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 you survive a genocide, you, you. you you survive a genocide, you you go through ten years in in a in a refugee camp, you come to the U S, you learn English, you get an education, you win an election. You've gotten laws passed to address food insecurity at colleges. Of all of this, when when you think about it, what are you most proud of that you accomplished?
Well, I I I I think what I'm most uh proud of and accomplished was that out of all this work um that I have done, I I feel like my work or service as empower other immigrant, not only immigrant that's who are born here, those immigrant, those who are still back uh uh in a refugee camp. I think one thing that uh something that make me so happy is uh most of the time when I call back uh some of my um friends in the refugee camp and you know, they see my pictures uh hang hanging in uh in the corner of the street and saying that Obala was here. And you know, that's one thing. And when they call me, they be they will ask me, Obala, when I come to America, will I be like you? And my response to them would be like, you will be more than like me because you will come in America at a point that you already know something, someone already paved the way for you, you know. I'm paving the way for you guys here so that the thing that when when refugees come here, uh they they felt like oh, it will take ten years uh to be elected official or it will be twenty years or my grand grandparent will be the one running for that. But uh the cool thing is that I get my citizenship in December, uh in December twenty nineteen. So six months later, uh the mayor asked me, hey, you get your citizenship, now it's time for you to run.
Don't waste any time.
Don't waste any time. So I'm like, mayor, you don't know what you're talking about. And and he's like, Obala, I know what I'm talking about because five years ago, you walked to my office and I don't know you. Now I know you. I know what I'm talking about. So and then the that rumors went around the city hall, you know, and I get a call from every city council, you know, you know, encouraging me like, Obala, you know. And before that, the mayor appointed me as an honorary city council, you know. By I can I not vote, but I can just listen, give my ideas and then they read that and through that process, we have a lot of immigrant uh learning about the process of the city government and I learn a lot about the city government. And what really make me happy, one of my main city councilwoman, Laura, Laura Hill. She is in her last term, you know, she's in her last term of 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 getting reelected. And she came to me, she's like, Obala, I have heard in I this no one better can represent the city council uh than you. So why am I telling you this? I am not going to run for reelection. I'm stepping down and I want you to give the city, you run for it. If you get a challenge, I will support you. If you don't get, you go for it. Look at her, I'm like, if someone who been in the office for one term, she accomplished so many thing. To me and believe in me and say, you know, that never happened in America. To be honest, I learn about so many history. Some city council, they've been there for ten years, some there fourteen years, some people, some senators. But they never step down and say, I have seen something, you know, uh or one of the kid that I mentor, I want them to be the next leader. So I look at her, I'm like, why? Why me? You know, I just become a citizen six month ago. And and now these councilwoman, she came to me and and say she wanna step down, she don't wanna run so that I can have the opportunity because the time uh the timing um and I and where we need it is so precious. I came home and I'm like, I need to think about it. I called her around like ten P M. I'm like, councilwoman, are you serious what you're telling me? Uh you you're not going to relearn uh rerun for election? She's like, yes, Obala, I believe in you, not only me. Anyone in this community will stand up because they want their children to be, you know, uh to be inspired by you. We, you know, and you will be the youngest, the youngest city councils to run for office uh in the history of Austin. So I am like, well, let me think about it. And everyone on the city council become my mentor, everyone on the council, you know, they they were what two of them become my advisor, one of them became my campaign assistant, one of them became my treasurer and all of them. And I am like, I never seen something like this. Why me? And those are things that I'm so grateful for. And finally, and uh thing that which make me so happy and I will say one of the most uh thing that I'm proud of is the Department of Human Service of Research Element in Minnesota, the the biggest, the Department of Human Service recognized me as a young outstanding leader of the year, of the year twenty twenty. So that was the biggest accomplishment that I will say apart from being elected as of uh as official. But the governor, the governor to recognize me, the Department of Human Services, you know, to pick me out of more than ten thousand refugee uh in uh uh in Minnesota to say that, Obala, we have seen your leadership. And after that, the governor himself appointed me on a on a board of trustee to oversee the universities and the community colleges in Minnesota. So the governor, I had a call from the and it was like, Obala, we have seen your application and you're going in, you will be the next board of trustee. So I I feel like, I don't know, this is just God work. And I feel like if you believe in yourself and believe in a dream that other people think are impossible, someone somewhere will believe in you too because, you know, confidence start with you and when you strongly believe that you can do something, someone who doesn't know your name will will come after you and look after you, like you now. You didn't know anything about it and you see my story. So that way I'm like, I want my daughter to, one day to look at me and say, my dad came here when he didn't have anything. If he can accomplish all those thing in a short period of time, what can I do? I am born here and I'm a citizen. I have every opportunity. She and he have paved the way. What can I do? I want my daughter to think like that so that she can try her best to, you know. And I want any immigrant who moved to America to know that the American dream is still alive. But those dream come in a way that you need to go for it. So.
I got one, one question about the election after you won. What'd your, what'd your mom say to you after you won?
Oh, my mom, my mom, she she stayed up all night waiting for the result. So she was so happy and you know, she's like, and for the first time, she didn't wanna Facebook before. She's like, for the first time, I wanna, I need a Facebook so that I can see what other people say about my son. So and I opened up uh Facebook for her. So she was so happy. She called every grandma back home. So and she's talking about it all the time and is like, Obala, you've changed everything. You've changed my life. And she's like, so happy. And everywhere she walk in town be like, oh, that's Obala mom, you know, because every day I walk with my mom, I'm going to the hospital, they be like, your son is great. And when she hear those few words because she doesn't speak English, she's like, thank you. And she will come on by like, someone told me today, you are great. And I'm like, yeah, thank you. So and seen then because and my mom, because my mom, she's going through a lot of, you know, uh medical issue and everything I do make her, you know, heal little by little because when you are happy, even if how much you are going through, you know, those sickness or those struggle, you uh you, the pain will not even seem that difficult, you know, you will just be like that. And that way I'm doing everything to keep her happy.
It must be incredible. She must be incredibly proud of you.
Yes.
So what's next for you? I mean, when when you look at the next, let's let's say, not even, let's let's not even say the next year. Wha- wha- what are your goals for the next few decades? Like, what do you, where are you looking ahead ultimately?
Um, I think the next few decade, uh that would be the long term goal, but the short term goals as for me right now is to make sure that Austin community is a community that is a welcoming and that welcoming is not just by preaching or by hashtag on social media. Is that we are putting in practice and we are doing intentionally whereby immigrant, any immigrant moving here are are connected with those native, those who are born here and build this community as a stronger, as a brothers and sisters. And knowing that anything we do together with a collaboration of our unique and our diversity, we can be one of the strongest uh city in a rural Minnesota. And we can do anything. That's my 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 first um goal. And the second one, I wanna make sure anyone live in Au- Austin has a better job, that they live in Austin, work in Austin and they get care in Austin. So for our my my biggest goal is to work with anyone, any city elected official so that we create more job within town here, support our uh, you know, our economy. And also, you know, making sure we have affordable housing and also having a market rate housing whereby uh the choices are out there, whoever who can afford the market rate, they can easily get into uh how how is that they need. Uh whoever need affordable housing, they can easily get it. So and then anyone can live happy life and they can achieve any dream they want to.
That's nice. That's really beautiful. I mean, you come from Ethiopia, right? I mean, obviously, in the in the recent past, there's there's been some some struggle and some some violence there, but it is one of the, you know, one of the most impressive cultures throughout world history. I mean, the contributions of Ethiopia just to the world culture, you go back to um, you know, the cop church there and 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 just this this really rich history, this rich empire history as well that it's had over time. Do you see yourself playing a role maybe in kind of helping to introduce the U S to Ethiopian culture and maybe being a bridge between the countries in some way?
Well, I I've been, um since I took a office, a lot of people will ask me what would be my role or what do I say about it? Um and to be honest, I am proud to call myself, I'm Ethiopian American. And for I uh get my citizenship, I'm proud to call myself, I'm Ethiopian because Ethiopia, as you mentioned, has a very rich culture, you know, in and it goes back of hundreds of years, you know. They are the only country that has not been colonized. And they're, they have their own calendar, you know, and you know, we have so much that respect, you know, on um international tables in um with all this uh genocide and with all this civil war that going within, you know, starting from my own uh town as a young age, you know, and now I'm witnessing like the one I'm seeing now at this age, uh at at my twenty year, uh twenty eight. I s- I felt like Ethiopia is not heading to the right direction because if the continuation of this uh civil war continued, that's how the country become weak. As whoever who is behind this or whoever who is trying to divide Ethiopia, that's that's their goal. I pray their goal or their mission will not uh, they will not accomplish their goals or their mission. Because one thing, there's two thing. If Ethiopia being divided again or into two country, whatever, the Tigray or Amara or whatever or Roma. That's how, you know, that's how a country become weak. I I'm not and someone who advocate for famine or anything. I I always advocate for human right and justice for everyone. My only comment when it comes to what's going on in Ethiopia right now is that I hope people will sit down on the table and have um a diplomacy talk instead of gun. Because a bullet cannot solve any problem, you know. There's nothing can be solved by a war, you know. Whatever the community that they have, they should sit down and be like, and look back and look at themselves and be like, look where we came from, for how long, how many years that we are being respected, you know, they control every part of East Africa. They are the strongest army, you know, they cannot even compete with Egypt. Uh if I have to break a little bit about Ethiopia, you know, they have the strongest army uh in Africa that no one, no one can even lay, uh you know, but they will become weak when they're divided because no one is looking as, I'm a proud Ethiopian, everyone will be like, uh I have to care about my ethnicity, you know. The politic, the of tribalism and all that, that's what destroying every nation in Africa. And I wish one day every African country can think for themselves and work for themselves and be like, I don't want anyone to go to the office because he's from my tribe. We have to elect leaders that care about the community, that care about every individual in that country instead of oh, you're from Gambia, I only care about you. You are from Amara, I only care about you. You're from Tigray. We don't need that. I hope they can think like how all those civilized country are being like the European, like the American whereby if a president elected uh a Republican or a Democrat, they're not only serving the Republican, they're serving the entire United States. I want everyone to think like that and and also envision like that. And I hope one day all this uh war will have a ceasefire and everyone will go back to normal life. So that our kid can still go back and visit their ancestor land, you know, their grand grandparent land and see like, this is where my root come from. And I'm so proud to be here.
Yeah, yeah, I I I have the same wish for it that you do. And, you know, if you look at the United States too, I mean, the United States, maybe not to the same degree um that that you're describing with the violence, but there's a lot of division in the United States too, a lot of it based off of politics, race, geography, a lot of different things. And that's um, that's a heartbreaking thing to 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 see here. And because one of the things that I always found very special about the United States is the ability for the country to succeed, given that it's made up of people from all over the world and all different walks of life, working together. Um and so, you know, in recent years, that's that's kind of been challenges a bit. And you know, I have the same wish for the U S that that we get past that and to come to a point where we're working better together as well and don't see ourselves so much in tribes.
Absolutely.
So, so um, do you have any advice for somebody just coming to the U S that that looks at what you've accomplished and wants to do the same thing? I mean, I know you've, you've mentioned to some friends that you've spoken to that are back at um back in Kenya and asking you about that, but is there anything else besides, you know, just the 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 hard work you have to put in when you get here? Anything else you would add to them that you think would be helpful?
Yeah, um the last advice that I will give to um some of my friends, those who are still in refugee and in one day, God will help them and come to America. Not only in America, if they can come to, you know, um any um a country that will give them a resettlement to start a new life is that um only one thing I will tell them is that education is powerful. Education, unlock every door, unlock any door that you you think or you think it will be impossible. And one thing that I will tell them is that one, once you arrive in this country, the first thing you look for is to get a little of education. If you don't have a high school diploma, get a GED. If you don't have a GED, uh try all your best to learn uh some other way like so that you can get some ESL classes and then get that GED. And if you are young, um and if you are young and coming to America at young age that you have there, uh you have the opportunity to go to high school, go to high school, get your high school diploma, go to college. And then after that, you look for a job. And one other thing, uh they don't have to go to college only. They can go to trade school, you know, like a professional school whereby they can get straight, you know, um a career out of there. They don't have to go to college, but if they prefer to having a little education and a career will help you in the long run. Because uh you don't wanna be working in a a company for almost twenty years as a as a line, uh you know, uh production or something without any grade that you can go up. You know, I tell myself, you know, it is good in this country. If you know something, you will go past any ladder, you know. So work hard and that's the only thing how you become successful. And there's no shortcut. I will tell, I will tell, I will keep on repeat. There's no shortcut in America. If you go the right channel, you will get every dream that you're looking for. If you go the right channel, you'll get every dream that you're looking for. Don't make any shortcut by following some of the thing that you hear on the news or by other people telling you, that will not get you anywhere, because when you take a shortcut in this country, that shortcut will let you go back to the same refugee camp that uh you came from, because I will have to be straight. In America, there's law and uh and regulation, if you follow the law, you do the right thing. No one will mess with you and no one will come and look after you. If you break the law, you as a refugee like me, even if I'm a citizen right now, my my privilege is like this, if I break the law, my citizenship will get done right away and I will be deported. If I make a crime, that will whatever, so this opportunity, but we have to be mindful of where we are going and what we are doing. By always following the right thing and doing the right thing at the right time. And so that you can succeed and the generation after you don't have to worry about anything.
One more question for advice, so as I'm, I'm sure you're aware, there are some Americans that are reluctant to welcome refugees or even immigrants, period. And anything you would say to try to change their opinion on that and to see the value of allowing immigrants to this country, continuing to allow immigrants to this country and welcoming refugees?
Yes, so my only, my advice for those um American, those who felt like um refugee or immigrant are burden to them or something, uh my first advice to them is that, you know, um everyone has asked to feel that way, no matter what, if you have a lot of pressure on you or everything, but one thing that I will say for sure. Refugee and immigrant, they are not just here in United States for luxury or anything. We um, we run away from very tough situation and uh very uh trauma and for us to have a place that we can call home, that we don't have to run every night and think about what will happen tomorrow so that our kid can grow up like your kid. This is the dream that every parent in a refugee camp been dreaming for. And uh the one thing that I want you to do, learn about us, take a five minute of your neighbor, be like, hey, um tell me about yourself and what brought you to America? So that you will learn about their true story, you know, uh me before uh my own story in Austin. Not everyone welcomed me before, you know, and some people, they still question me. Uh, why is he even here or why is he even doing that? And the only thing I tell people, give me five minute of your time, if I don't change your mind within that five minute. I, 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 I don't have to bother you after that and every individual that have a different opinion about immigrant. Not only in Austin here, as I, you know, visit every community college throughout Minnesota. I only need five minute of your time and I tell you about my story and about why I'm here, what I'm doing. You will have a different perspective, so short story, try to learn about them. You know, either they come from Syria, either they come from, you know, Guatemala, either they come from Ethiopia, they come from DRC, they come from you know, Kenya, learn, try to learn about them, try to learn about this story. They, you may find something unique in them that you will be like, oh, I didn't know about it. And one thing that we are so grateful that we are here and we want our kid to have opportunity that you two uh been having. And uh the, and finally, um immigrant, they boost the economy. So every economy, every sector in, in America, you go Midwest, you go uh east coast, you go there's not a factory or any meat company that is not run by immigrant. Say immigrant, they are not welcome here, who will run those meat company? If I work, I, I work for Mayo Clinic uh for uh five years and I see immigrant, they are doctors, you know, they engineers, they're, you know, uh, you know, they are nurses. And I took another job three month ago uh at Hormel Food, you know, uh here in Austin. Every line, eighty percent, eighty percent, those who are in production, they're immigrant, eighty percent. Eighty percent, they are immigrant and to look at that, Hormel is one of the leading uh meat company in Midwest. And if you say they are not welcome in Austin, if this factory shut down, all those anywhere, anywhere. What would they eat? So I, I just, I just want everyone to think and be like they are here, they're looking for a job, they're looking to support their family, let me learn about them, what can I do to support them? You don't have to support immigrant, but just acknowledge them that they are here for a reason to better themselves.
Well, I, I don't have any more questions, um do you have anything you wanna add before we break up?
I, I don't have anything else, I really appreciate your time and I'm looking forward to see the recording. And feel free to edit it, whatever you feel like, you, you don't need to take it out. I'm okay with uh whatever you're doing with it, I hope this story will inspire other uh, uh, you know, American outside there. And have them, you know, feel welcome and have them, uh you know, being in power and do other great thing to uh continue um building this uh, uh beautiful country.
Yeah, and I, I just, just to get kind of the final word. I just wanted to say how happy I am that you and your family came to the US. And I'm a little bit jealous of Minnesota, that you didn't stay in New York City when you landed at JFK. Cause uh we'd, we'd love to have you here and I'm, I'm really looking forward to continuing to follow your story and, and follow your life and see all that you're still gonna accomplish here. Um, it's really gonna be, you know, I'm gonna be so happy to watch that, you know, I'll be very proud to have interviewed you early on in this process, um but I, I have no doubt you're gonna go very far and you're gonna continue to contribute so much here, so couldn't be happier and um prouder that you're here, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much and you have a great day.
You too.